Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Welcome to September 21st, 2011 Board of Commissioners' Meeting. If we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Commissioner Kokoski has our dog this week.
She's pretty strong for an old girl. We have probably about a 10-year-old Chihuahua mix. She's got a lot of spunk left in her. She's got a great personality, but she needs a lot of food and love. Here, baby. Nope. She looks like she'd be starving. Her little bones are sticking out. So somebody needs to come down to our Dog Pound, pick her up, take her home, give her a lot of love and affection, take her for a walk. She's got a lot of energy. She makes somebody a great pet. And she will be available Saturday after 3 o'clock, so you can come down there and pick her up, or you can see what else we have, check us out online, and let County Dog Pound be the first place you go if you're looking for an animal.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No investments, preparations?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Airport of Work Contract to Shoulder Construction, Inc., Michigan, in the amount of $76,833.76 for the Runway 725 payment crack ceiling and payment marking projects. For bits were received in July 26th, as being most responsive complying with specifications, FAA will fund 95% and $3,842.69 County will pay from airport construction account. Issue notice to proceed honor before October 30 and complete honor before November 18. Authorized Administrator notify the Honor to retain as a completion project.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the service sheet for employees within jurisdiction. Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. I do want to talk to you about the Team Sti contract that we haven't gotten to. We're pushing some timeframes on that, so we need to have a discussion on that contract. Also, potential new hire in community development and at the county home. And an update on sale of real estate. All of those topics are allowable for discussion in the executive session, so I would ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session of those talks. Thank you.
Approve away the reading in the same of the County Commissioners' Meeting minutes of September 14, 2011.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Transit, authorize various filings of applications with ODOT for fiscal year 12. Transportation assistance grants to include Ohio elderly and disabled transit assistance programs and urban transit program.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Submit federal grant applications with FTA and other federal agencies for fiscal year 12 transportation assistance grants.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, advertise for bits for asphalt payment for salt storage facility. Notice being the chronicle on September 23rd and 30th and open at 2:00 p.m. on October 7th. Cost estimate is $45,000 to be paid from the Construction Capital Improvement Fund.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve the COPS Child Sexual Predator Program Grant in the amount of $426,457 that will aid in the investigation of child sexual predators and authorize creation of Fund 2322.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to congratulate Steve Maury, Timlareen County, being named one of the 40 Under 40 in Northeast Ohio by Crane's Magazine. Well-deserving. Steve's been a great team member and a great asset to both Timlareen County and our community. So he deserves everything he can get. Also, I'd like to ask the Board about endorsing the JVS Levy. I'm on the campaign with them. I was out there for a few hours last night. I obviously consider JVS to be another gem in this county, just like Lorraine Community College and Oberlin College. They provide opportunities, a different career path, a different employment path than say someone that would be going off to higher education. And then some folks leave the technical field and go off to higher education. So they're an integral piece of the mosaic of what we do for our community here and the young people that are going to progress up to raising families and enjoying working and living in our communities. I actually, if the Board would consider passing a resolution endorsing the need for us to support the JVS Levy.
I would move to do a resolution endorsing Joint Vocational Schools Levy on a November ballot.
And I'll second that. I actually attended JVS in my 11th and 12th grade year, and it had nothing to do with politics. So (laugh) they don't have a political class out there, I don't believe. So this is not what I thought I was going to do when I grew up. But it's a great school then, and I think it's an even better school now. So I'll second that.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
I just want to add on to that vocational programs, great program. Actually, I didn't go through JVS. I went through the local school vocational program, got me started into the engineering field. And a lot of friends that went through JVS who ended up going into the military and ended up having fine careers in the military. It's a great program. I was able to walk through there in March, which is absolutely phenomenal. The teachers, the professors out there. If you ever get a chance to go out there and visit them, they've got a great cafeteria, a Buckeye Room. And they also have a wonderful bakery where you can go there on Saturdays and get some terrific food. So hopefully you'll support the program with voting. What's the millage that they're asking for?
They're asking for a replacement of the .75 and an additional 1 mill. This is the first time they've asked for additional funding in 29 years. The building's 40 years old. It's in need of capital improvement. And it'll cost a homeowner of a $100,000 home approximately $2.73 a month. Now, I'm pulling off the top of my head, that was, that's what I was out there last night to learn, so I think that's fairly accurate.
I believe the building is over 10 acres, just a building, correct?
Huge.
$3 million is to redo the roof. So if you could support it, that would be a wonderful thing.
That's a great program. They do a great job. The new welding in the last couple of years, I mean, they're really stepping up their game, and they're doing a fantastic job.
They are. And let me point out that we have a satellite workforce development, employment network office out there in the Adult Career Center. So when people think of JVS, it's just not any younger students. We have a lot of older adults that go out there for additional job training and skill training to either improve themselves in their job or to seek better opportunities in work. And they're also a founding and supporting member of the Lorraine County Growth Partnership and have been a wonderful partner, working on economic development and workforce development issues in this county.
They're working with Lorraine Community College, so the high schoolers can actually agree with the associate's degree, right?
Absolutely. The, you know, the relationships between the community college and JVS have never been better. And they continue to foster those relationships and come with new programming. And those relationships allow that programming. I remember, it wasn't too long back, that there was a little bit of a distance between the groups, and that distance doesn't exist anymore.
I know the welding facility is just outstanding with the computers they have and the technology they continue to bring in.
Perfect.
Well, the culinary program that they have out there is now in conjunction with the new culinary they have at college, correct?
Well, they're working collaboratively. And also, down in Tremont, there's a restaurant called Dante's, and it's a fabulous eatery that opened a couple of years ago when Dante's moved from, over an independence. And both the sous chef and the pastry chef are graduates of JVS culinary program, and both went on to Johnson &amp; Wales and then returned here.
Oh, beautiful.
To work in Northeast Ohio. So there's more success stories. You know, I'll just give you a brief one. But yes, their culinary program has led many people to, you know, the Johnson &amp; Wales and the Melk Culinary Institute and so forth. And some of them are returning to Northeast Ohio and Lorraine County, and that's great. One of the individuals, right now, that's probably in the top 40 individuals in the McDonald's Corporation, is actually a 1978 graduate of JVS. So, you know, JVS is no longer those people that don't do well in English and math, and we send them out there. It's all about high-tech manufacturing and all about a good solid education, a good solid start to wherever life's going to take you.
They get the job done.
Yes, they do.
I was looking through the adult education pamphlet that was sent in the mail, and they even have a program for adults that you can learn all the different trades, like building a house, electrical, the masonry, the plumbing, a little bit of everything. I think it was like $5,000. They taught you almost everything you need to know to, either just to own a house or do that for a living. I mean, I think it'd be nice for people to have that knowledge, just if they own it, so they could fix it themselves, or if they wanted to get in that kind of trade, so.
They actually build a house.
They do, yes.
They build a house on the campus and then tear it down and recycle the material.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's great. I love that school.
Actually, a few years ago, we had our first dream house in Lorraine County that they participated in. It was the whole G.O.
They actually, with our friends over at the BIA.
Right.
They actually built the dream house, and if I'm not mistaken, they sold it.
Correct.
It was moved. It was a solid waste recycling partnership that we were involved in. I think it took two or three years, over a whole, people started working on it as maybe freshmen or sophomores, and they completed it when they were seniors. So it was a great partnership.
Great. Do we take a vote on that already? We did?
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
No, I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant Attorney, prosecute.
Commissioners, Oberlin City Council passed an ordinance 1163 to enter in a purchase agreement with the county for the purchase of the Green Acres property for the sum of So I need a formal resolution from the Board of Commissioners authorizing that we enter into this purchase agreement for the sale of, what is it, 538 East College Street in Oberlin for the sum of $265,000.
I will so move.
I have a question. I'll second. I have a question. That's to net $265,000. It's not the sale price of $265,000.
It's net.
Right. So the sale price has to be higher, doesn't it?
They, no. They've picked up all of the costs.
They're taking all the closing costs.
All the closing costs, and it's taxes and property, so there's no arrears on the taxes. So it's a clean net.
Okay. And we did have an appraisal done, and that was the appraisal price?
Yes. Yes.
What's the plans for the facility?
To be honest with you, I didn't ask. I had the dubious pleasure of boarding that place up in 1995 with the expectations that it would come out of mothballs or be sold within a year or two. We were just putting the wood up for security purposes. And now it's 2011, we're finally able to move the property. So I really was just very happy that it had been sold to somebody and may get used after 16 years of sitting idle and being a drain.
No more cutting of grass or maintenance.
And there's a lot of grass out there that had to be cut, and we had to keep that cut. So I'm sorry, Commissioner, I cannot tell you what they're going to use it for, but any purpose is better than the one we weren't using it for.
That's true.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Other than that, I do have to update the Commissioners about the latest ruling pertaining to the local government litigation. So I need the executive session to discuss pending court action.
Commissioners' report.
I just want to say that my thoughts and prayers are with two friends of mine that passed away this week. One, Tim Donovan from the UAW, and also Jerry Lewandowski, who was our Chairman of the Board at Goodwill. They are both really great guys, and they're going to be truly missed. And that's my report.
Busy week. I attended the groundbreaking for the Avon Interchange. As Mayor Smith said, it was a 16-year process, and the Board of Commissioners were very much involved with that. At the end, when we had to go through the study at Nowaka to show that it wouldn't be bad for Cuyahoga County, it was nice to see that groundbreaking started. It's a great public-private partnership, and good luck to the city of Avon. On Friday, I had a County Commissioners Association meeting of our general board. We met with the Office of Budget Management, Tim Keane, who is the Director for Governor Kasich, as he talked about the budget cuts. And as the Commissioners argued, we took undue hits based on the overall size of the budget, and that we are just a regional office of state government. Whatever they send down, we are, you know, meant to administrate and implement. And we didn't feel it was fair the way the cuts were handed out. He argued both ways and talked about the tools they were giving us. We argued back, but they presented their point, and we have to live with it. I also attended the Apple Festival on Saturday, talking to residents and handing out fact sheet about our sales tax that we've had out there. The response was mixed. Comments from, "We don't use, you know, the Sheriff's Department," to "How come the Commissioners cut transit?" So it was all over the board. And things that actually didn't have anything to do with Commissioners, like police officers. On Sunday, I represented the Board of Commissioners at the Admiral King Tribute on Hamilton Avenue in Lorraine, where they dedicated the new park, delivered a proclamation. They brought in Rear Admiral Deloche to speak, and a lot of family members of Fleet Admiral King. Very nice. On Monday, I was invited by Cuyahoga County Executive Ed Fitzgerald to a press conference in Cleveland. We held it at the Cuyahoga Administration Building overlooking the wind turbine at the Science Center to speak about the importance of wind in Ohio as an energy portion, especially as the governor this week is coming out. And two representatives, one being Tom Patton from up here, Senator Patton, introducing legislation to roll back our renewable portfolio standards. We worked very hard on that. I think this is my seventh year involved with alternative energy. And over six years, working with Great Lakes Task Force on this, and then being a founding member of LeadCo, Lake Area Energy Development Corporation, on how important wind is, and also the offshore component of wind. And we're not sure what's going on at this point. Shale's the big talk right now, but there's environmental issues out there that wind doesn't quite, you know, cause. And again, not sure what Columbus is doing and what the governor's going to do. He asked us to stay out of the budget bill. When they were doing that in June, they do an energy summit in September, October of this year. We asked to participate, and it doesn't look like offshore wind, and much wind and solar are even on the agenda. So I have major concerns as to where that's going. And tomorrow, I'll be in Columbus with our Community Development Director, meeting with Nate Green from the Department of Development on their new program. So the end of my report, and then I'll go back into the budget stuff, if you don't mind after you make your comments, Tom.
Thursday, last Thursday, we attended the Lorraine County Township Association meeting. A great event there. I got to speak to a lot of individuals regarding the sales tax law support out there. Going to be out there on Monday in Penfield Township Hall on the northwest corner of intersection 301 and 18 in Wellington. The sheriff, the prosecutor, domestic relations judge, the coroner. Who's going to be able to attend here? I'll be out there too.
I'll be out there.
Laurie, you can be able to?
Yeah, I'm going to try to make it out.
So all three Commissioners will be there. Please come out and ask your questions regarding the sales tax. Should be a good session. On Friday, I attended the Alariah Apple Festival, was able to speak with individuals. Same results, a lot of it coming back to city issues and not really county. But again, some stuff that we have to do to educate the people on what the county is responsible for. Sunday, I attended the festivities in Lorraine for Admiral King. Great job, Mr. Kayla.
I didn't see you there. I wonder, I was looking, I didn't see where you were at.
Yeah, I was standing in the background with my daughter, so.
Oh, okay. You could've come up front.
Yeah. And tomorrow, I will be with the Sheriff's Department on road patrol, so trying to talk to Sheriff and to let me drive the car. Don't think that's going to happen, no.
You're doing a ride-along?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. So I told him I'll make sure I bring a lot of jelly donuts.
Oh.
Oh. You're going to get in trouble again. Wow.
So the jelly donuts are for me. End of my report.
All right. If we can go into some more conversation. The last few days, I've been with our budget director, and we've been scouring all of our We have turned over absolutely everything that we've been working for, looking for revenues. You're all aware of, we are short about $6.5 million for next year, 6.8, the moving target number, with not having the carryover from the emergency sales tax from two years ago. That's why we're on the ballot this year with issue 22, looking for a quarter percent temporary just for criminal justice system. I've given a breakdown to the Commissioners. I think some of the press and audience out there have looked at what our budget is, and there is also cuts that I'm presenting, bringing out, that have all been discussed here through our budget hearings. What we've worked on this year to go through our anticipated general fund carryover and shortfall for next year. Based on our unencumbered cash and expenditures that have to go out, we have also, through the process, been able to find through the Transportation Center project finishing up, there were advances made back in 2004, 2005, correct, Administrator?
Five and six, I think.
Correct. Well, there was four, five, and six.
Four, five, and six. A bringback of $880,000 that was advanced from the general fund. Sales tax, based on the trend, looks like it will be up $400,000 this year.
From last year.
Correct. Our surplus from the certificate of title, based on discussions with Clerk of Court Nabokowski, we would expect $700,000 in total back from the certificate of title. We also finally, after many years, got an Attorney General's opinion, allowing us to bring back $551,000 from original advances to the 911 setup. And if you might want to give us a little bit of information on that, Jerry or Jim, how that came about, because that predates all of us.
Well, actually.
Except you and Jerry.
It goes all the way back to 2001, and began in 2000 with the expansion of the 911 and the EMA facility, which was completed in, I want to say 2000, late 2002, early 2003. It was always anticipated that the 911 would pay their portion of the percentage of the expansion of the building out there. So we allocated back and forth based upon the square footage and cost what that would be. In 2003, one of our local prosecuting attorneys here took up the issue that we couldn't charge the 911 levy for that construction. And there is some things in the code that would, you know, possibly be interpreted that way, so I don't want to be disparaging with that. But it's been an ongoing battle, and I guess I've been waging this mini inside war for about five or six, seven years, to recapture that funding, because I believed it was permissible. So we finally agreed to send out for an AG opinion, which Mr. Ennis was so kind to write several months ago. And the AG came back and agreed with us that we could recapture those costs, and it was a legitimate cost against the levy for 911. So it took a long time.
Thank you. Also, as we just passed the resolution on the sale of Green Acres, that was under real estate, so we didn't know when it was going to go through. We did sell Green Acres, that's initial $265,000. From the Budget Commission and our budget director speaking with the County Auditor's Office, the U Trust Fund, which is the expiration of money, five years old, that was never cashed out, there's $230,000 expected to show up. And we had an uptick in local government funds that was about $1.3 million based on the old formula, which is about $4.3 million. I presented to our Commissioners, based on the discussions we had in our budget hearings and working with elected officials, sort of splitting the hairs between Commissioner Williams' proposed cuts and the cuts that I had presented. But I have a list of them that totals to about $529,400, and you've got to break down their press, and I can go through them individually. Lorraine County Community Alliance would be defunded to $25,000 for next year. Transit would be split, it's currently $100,000. Would be a $50,000 funding. Team Lorraine County and the Chamber would both take hits. Team Lorraine County approximately $10,000, and the Chamber approximately $5,000, and the subsidy we give them. We have a major issue here with OSU Extension. We're required by law to contribute approximately $113,000 to OSU Extension to qualify for a 4-H program. We do that through $86,400 of our general fund, and the balance of that comes from our solid waste for the functions they perform out there in regards to recycling. I have that on the board at $86,400, and I know OSU Extension's here to speak with us this morning. Soil and water, we had the discussion as of last week. It was quite contentious and confusing for our Oberlin contingency. But basically, defunding the $75,000 that we give them every year. So we would not have participation, which would then cause our problems with NPDS not being taken care of, which is an environmental concern. We also have the Office on Aging. It's not required or mandated in the county. We provide free facility for them, but also have a salary budget of $78,000. That would eliminate the Office on Aging at a county-wide level. Again, not mandated. And I'll explain all these going the other side. Our Building and Grounds, who would eliminate $50,000 from budget, which would be approximately one body. The Custodial Department, $50,000, which would be two bodies probably. We have a gentleman leaving Community Development, put his resignation in, probably not filling that position. Again, a $50,000 savings. And I put $50,000 in miscellaneous to cover any type of trailing costs we may anticipate with loss of employees. That totals $529,400. And then going through the cuts that were discussed out here, again, Commissioner Williams were a little bit higher, mine were a little bit lower, but the County Prosecutor's Office a $200,000 cut to their budget. The County Auditor, a $200,000 cut. The County Treasurer, $50,000. The County Recorder, $50,000. $648,000 to Domestic Relations, knowing we can't touch the judge's budget. But as Commissioner Williams has found out, pathways and turning point are not mandated, and we do not have to have them. That's a $648,000 savings. Our County Clerk of Courts, $100,000 in cuts. And then the jail subsidy the Board of Commissioners gives to the county jail, $350,000 eliminated. They'll have to learn how to work. Those cuts total between the commissioners and all the other departments, about $2.127 million. Still leaving us about $372,000 to come up with cuts, which will have to be discussed and laid out. Our fund shortage that our Budget Commission's come up with is approximately $2.8 million. I'm a little bit more positive looking. I would guess they'd be around 2.5 or a little under after return of all funds, because again, this is a living document and it moves based on expenditures. But these are the budget cuts I would like to actually start informing our departments about, so they can start preparing for next year. I'm not prepared to do cuts for this year. I don't think we can make a quick enough turnaround and a change, because a lot of it affects the courts. But this would give numbers to prepare if the sales tax doesn't pass in November, that they would have to anticipate they would have to live on for next year, and start doing some reorganizations of their office. Given this to Jerry Innis, I will forward it to the other department heads. And I will take any comments, questions, audience, my other commissioners, Administrator.
I just, a couple of things. I also agree that we can't do anything this year. A lot of these line items that you spoke of are things that, when we make our budget at the beginning of the year, that money is given to them immediately at the beginning of the year. So, we can't take back something that we've already given, so that's out of the question. You're showing a $372,000 cut, additional cut that needs to be done. But I, am I missing the money, cost savings that we, for combining 911 and the Sheriff's Department?
That's included in our budget for 2012. That still leaves our shortfall of the $2.8 million.
I don't see that listed in anything here.
Well, it's just in our expected for next year, our 2012. This leaves our shortfall based on the new budgets that were put together, talking about the cuts that Court of County Police took. They lowered their budget number. The Court of Probate lowered their number. The Sheriff adjusted his budget based on the combining of Dispatch coming over to 911 and no longer needing to be in his budget need.
Okay.
This is based on the most up-to-date as of Friday, because we worked on this over the weekend and Monday, Tuesday. So, this is the most current based on the numbers that we were given, based on our budget hearings here and what we had anticipated happening with 911 and Dispatch.
Okay.
Okay. I guess my concern here, I understand what you're doing with 2012. I'm going to look a little further. I'm going to go to 2013. If our, still looking at the same budget for 2012, going into 2013, a $54 million. I don't expect our revenue to increase that much, so if we're looking around $42 million, we're looking at a $12 million deficit.
We're looking at major cuts Commissioner Williams on, and if the sales tax doesn't pass, that's where we'll look at the devastation of county government at that point.
Right, and with that, if it doesn't pass, then I think that's, these numbers are going to have to increase for 2012 in order to get a, to get the savings for 2013, so.
Right, because a lot, a lot of these anticipated, unanticipated revenues are a one-time deal. They're, you know, we're not going to see them again, like the money that we're getting from 911 or the sale of green acres or the transportation center and things like that. So, that's, that's the issue as to why, one of the reasons why the sales tax needs to be passed. Those, those funds won't be there again for next year, or, or 2013.
I think we can probably agree somewhere around $2.5 million is our shortfall for next year's budget after all these, because we came $4.3 million, based on all these one-time events. You know, based on what we've been doing to get there, so.
Yeah, I would agree. In order to get the, the budget, they have a balanced budget for 2012. We're looking at a 2.5, but it's something that we'll have to look at further as far as making additional cuts in anticipation of the budget for 2013, but.
No, what we still need to do is come up with, there are $373,000 in cuts. But is the Board comfortable in going forward with these current cuts that's sent forward, so the elected officials can start looking at their budget for next year?
I'm willing to go along with those numbers, and I think we'll have an even better idea the closer we get to the end of this year. It's still early on in the year, believe it or not, even though it's September, to really determine how much money that all the departments will be giving back. I'm sure it's going to be less than it used to be, since so many of these departments have been cut year after year, but.
We actually, Commissioner, we actually went back to David and Lisa and looked back at what was given back last year by department, then took the 5% cuts into account that were given to them to actually come up with the carryover. Put them to work on that for a couple of days, chasing back where we thought we would be, so. They're pretty confident unless something else shows up, or sales tax upticks more than what their trend has continued, somewhere around there. Actually, when they worked between their two numbers, they were $10,000 or $20,000 apart, working on it.
Right, she told me that yesterday. The only thing is, I know that our Budget Department is very conservative, and they, you know, they do that to protect us for, you know, making sure that we cut enough, so. But we usually seem to do a little bit better than what is anticipated. And as far as our income, I think our certificate's always on the low side too. So, I'm a little more optimistic, so I'm hoping towards the end of the year that we'll see a decrease in that $372,000.
Yeah, it's still, I mean, 2013 may go from a $12 million deficit.
To $11 million. I know, it's still bad, I know.
Well, I think if it happens at that point, we've got major concerns of how the government's going to move forward. Is the Board comfortable in sending these out as numbers to work with among the department heads currently to look at their budgets for next year? And I guess I'll defer to Mr. Cordez, looking at these numbers. You've got a copy of this?
It is what it is. You know, there was a time we tried to cut when we had funding. We started several years ago in anticipation of what the next five years was going to look like. And while I think we have full cooperation by almost all county entities right now, five, six years ago, we didn't have that cooperation, because they want, they didn't want to save to delay this point. So, this, these cuts are going to be significant and severe, because the departments have been ratcheting down costs now for the last, at least the last two years, and I think significantly for the last two years. There's going to be a slowdown in some services and a delay of other services. But the, the funds are not there. Before, when we tried to make the cuts, the funds were there, and it was a big argument, because the funds were available. Today, the funds aren't there, and, you know, a wise person once told me, "The decisions become much easier when you don't have any money."
It's easy to say no.
So, we're, we're going to have to make it work one way or another.
As far as the cuts that we have in the Commissioners Department, Buildings and Grounds, we won't have to actually lose, we won't have to lay anybody off, because we won't replace the one person that just left. Same with Community Development, but Custodial, I see a hardship in trying to lay off two custodians. How, we don't have that many left, do we?
Here's what I'm going to suggest. We will, now that, the Board has finalized their position with regard to these proposed cuts, we'll sit down, we'll go through the departments, and we'll come up with a strategy on what the effect is going to be. I can give you a little bit of insight into that, but, but we've made other cuts that were producing dividends for us already. So, some, some of these cuts, we, we were preparing for, because we knew they were coming. So, how, how hard it's going to be, I can't tell you right now. We're, we're going to, we're going to look at the numbers. I've been moving money between the Commissioners Departments now for three years to keep each department shored up and moving from the various counts, like most other agencies elected officials have been doing. I know that through the remainder of the year, we'll be fine, and we'll have a strategy for going into next year. I will, would like to loop around back to the Office on Aging, if I may. You said we were going to shut the Office on Aging. Actually-
No, I said eliminate the employee. We still give it housing and everything. We give it in-kind. We don't have salary money, because it's not a mandated.
Right, let me, let me explain, for, we know, but let me explain for those that don't know what the relationship is with the Office on Aging. There's, there's a nonprofit group that, that actually runs, runs things over there. They're on the second floor of the Gates Building, right in front of where 911 and EMA is. We provide salary and benefits support to the Director, who is on our salary and benefits here, and administratively reports to my office. But for programmatic issues, reports to the nonprofit board. So, they're going to continue to exist. They're just going to have to figure out how to do one of two things. Either pay the Director and/or replace the Director with, you know, some other form of guidance to keep themselves moving. They have a lot of programming up there. They have the RSVP, they have some Meals on Wheels things, I believe they still do. So, I don't, I know it's going to be significant to them, but, but the Office on Aging will just have to figure out how to continue on into the future. And you're still going to be, from my understanding in our talks, you're still going to give them the in-kind of the space and the supports.
We just can't afford the salary anymore.
Right. So, that, you know, I just want to, I just want to be comfortable that we're still going to support them, because we do a lot of maintenance up there, and we pay the electric bills and things like that.
Now, this is just basically salary issues and personnel cuts that have to be made to meet the budget constraints that we're going to be under in 2012.
Well, I, you kind of went around the, the question that I asked you. Since we have $50,000 written here under Custodial, does that mean we actually have to cut from Custodial? Or is that an option to cut from somewhere else?
The way I understood the hour talks, is that you're taking these out, but that it's global with all the departments we have. And if I can make it work, I can make it work. Again, moving money between.
Because I'm not comfortable letting go to custodians.
I've understood your position along, Commissioner. I, I believe that once we, we look at the numbers and we see where we can move money from one place to another. We've had some people leave early in the year. We didn't replace them. In fact, I'm going to, you made a statement about not replacing another person's leaving. I got a recommendation to replace the person that left seven months ago. So, you know, that, that gave us a gain in that area for a little while. But I, I don't want to look at the temporary of what we have this year. I need to look at the permanency of the cuts for next year.
Correct. That's what I'm asking you to do, and every other department in the county.
Perfect. And this has to be done, and we'll work with them, and we'll, we'll figure it out. I, I met with Doug Messy yesterday for about an hour and a half. We talked about, you know, several issues. The truth is, most people are just waiting to see what you are going to do, so they can respond to that. And I think that you've given them plenty of time to respond to it.
That's actually been my discussions with the other elected officials. We just need to know where we're going to be at. And I think this gives us a pretty good roadmap going into next year with another $372,000. And based on Commissioner Kokoski, her and I have both been here. If there's any fluctuation in additional returns, that $372,000 may not be as severe.
The, the one thing I, I'd like to have some dialogue with the Board is, we need to point out, because people are going to be looking at, okay, we figured this out, as Commissioner Williams was saying, for 2012. We're still, we're still deferring roof repairs. We're still deferring maintenance. We're still deferring vehicle replacement. We haven't replaced vehicles at the Sheriff's Department. We, I mean, the list is endless of the, I don't want to say crumbling infrastructure, but the, the needs that are not being attended to. Commissioner Kokoski was going down the stairwell in the garage the other day when we had a fire alarm.
Shh, don't tell. I told Brad I'd give him $5 if he found the broken handrail. And now you just told him where it's at.
Came to the front of the building while I was, I was discussing the situation with the fire department and was telling me, well, we got to get a handrail. The handrail's broken and missing in the stairwell coming down the back of the parking deck. And I said, well, we're even lucky the parking deck's still standing, never mind the handrail. The, the, and we kind of laughed about it, but the truth is, we, we have a lot of significant problems that are not being addressed, that normally would be addressed if we were doing business as usual. We're not doing business as usual. We're deferring lots of things, and we're putting off lots of costs that eventually are going to cause even bigger problems for us. And the cost will be multiplied, because the lack of maintenance only makes the repair costs that much greater later.
Absolutely.
And, and I remember when the Sheriff's Department, we started a vehicle replacement program for them back, I want to say around 2001 or '02. It was significant. We were trying to replace 10, 12 vehicles sometimes, because they were so rundown and so depleted. And we needed so much money to try to, to get the rolling stock back into shape. So, while the public may think that, you know, we, we've escaped this, we haven't. We've put a Band-Aid on it, and, and the Band-Aid's only going to stay, stay on it for just so long. And I don't mean to sound, you know, so, so tense about that, but, but, you know, we know these things are going on, and we need to make sure that other people know they're going on. And, and that, that these solutions are, as Commissioner Kokoski said, some of these are one-time solutions, and some of them will, will produce some dividends. But in the long run, we're, we're heading down a road that, that is going to be completely dangerous for the county to be on in, in the very near future.
Thank you, Jim. While we're doing this, do you mind if we bring up the OSU Extension and discuss now prior to going to public comment? Because she said she wanted to speak anyway. Would you like to join us, talk about the OSU Extension? A great program, by the way. I do not like proposing these things. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for giving me this opportunity. I'm Lynette Gord with OSU Extension, County Director at the Office. And I just wanted to give you a quick update of the changes that we're making in our office. And, you know, due to the funding, if you look at the second sheet, it's a yellow handout that has the list of appropriations for the past five or six years, you know, and how they've decreased. We're at the point that we don't have enough money in our funds in order to pay severance, you know, for all employees unless we make changes before the end of the year. So, on Monday, we did give layoff notices to three employees that will be gone. We've reduced two other staff. So, what we're going to be doing is closing our office on Friday. So, we're going to go to four-day work weeks because of those changes. And I just wanted to let you know that that's the kind of changes that we're making. The other thing I gave you is a revised 2012 budget with those personnel changes on it. You know, it still reflects that in order to make our budget, we're going to need $171,000, realizing that all of that will not come from Commissioners. But we're, we've been very active at pursuing grants and pursuing user fees and other kinds of things to keep our office going. We've been doing that for the last two years, you know, making changes however we could to make that happen. To follow up on what Mr. Cordez was saying, the same thing with us. We have computers. I think our newest computer is five years old. And so, a lot of those infrastructure things just don't get done. We're still doing what we can, you know, with what we have.
Well, if you can help us out here, and probably you saying it's better than one of the Commissioners talking about, and I had done this a couple of years ago in Columbus, to know what our minimum funding was required for OSU Extension to operate, and then also qualifying a sort of 4-H program. So, as I was telling the Commissioners, I've been going there since 1983.
Right.
I really enjoy that, but, and there's 1,400 families involved, a lot of my close friends.
Right.
Explain how that works out and what we're mandated to provide or not mandated to have a program.
Okay, if you look at that budget, and, and another change, just to step back a minute, as you look at that budget, the 2012 County requested fund on that first item is $90,400. And that's less than that $103,200 that we talked about last year, because I have given my services to Medina County for one day a week. So, they had a family consumer sciences educator who retired August 31st. And so, they asked if I would be able to provide that service to them one day a week. And in light of these changes, I said, "That's a great opportunity to do some of those shared services between counties." And so, that, that $12,800 that's in that other funds category represents that part of, of me that will be in Medina County, and they will fund that part of that. So, that $90,400 is that cost share to keep OSU Extension.
So, $14,000 less than it was in the previous year.
Yes.
And $24,000 less than two years ago.
Yes.
So, with Mr. Kallo's proposed cut, or the Commissioners', if we cut you down to zero, what does that mean for your office?
If you cut down to zero funding?
Yes, that's what we're proposing today.
That office, the office is gone.
It's gone.
I mean, we cannot, without any cost share, without any money from the Commissioners, we cannot remain open in Lorraine County.
There'd be elimination of the extension services in Lorraine County.
And how many people work there currently?
With the changes we just made, we have three educators, one in family consumer sciences, one in 4-H youth development, and one in agriculture horticulture, plus two part-time support staff. And one employee that does nutrition education with low-income families, that's totally federally funded. But unless family consumer science is there as an educator, that funding cannot be there, because that- because that requires a supervision of that program area.
And also the Extension runs the Carkeens program that domestic sends kids who have driving issues.
Exactly.
Because I've been there, right, Commissioner?
I went there.
Yeah.
You too? Your kids aren't old enough yet.
The DRC would then have to find someone else to provide those programming.
Right.
How many kids go through the programs, all the programs, a year?
We ha, we have over almost 2,000 4-H youth in the youth development program. We have other youth programs and I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but one of the programs we, we did was doing nutrition education with summer feeding programs all summer. The Eliria City Schools provides the food for that. And then our program goes in and provides nutrition education for those youth. We also do programs in the schools. Our composting education program that's funded through the solid waste portion of those funds goes into the schools and school youth programs. Currently, I'm also working with a grant with Wellington Schools that we're doing nutrition education in the classrooms. We just put a school garden in. If you have to be, if you happen to be down near Westwood, we have cabbage and rutabagas and onions and all kinds of cold crops growing right now that we're going to be sharing with those kids.
Yeah, it's a very important program for the county, but at this point, it's not a mandated requirement like a lot of the cuts. Commissioners have to fund the other departments, the criminal justice system and such.
Understand.
I, I'd like to make a, an amplifying comment on something you said, and you, you called them severance, but I, I want to readdress that as trailing costs because we don't really pay severance.
Okay.
I want to, I'm sensitive to the public thinking, okay, now we're giving these public employees severance.
Okay.
Unlike private business, that will usually give you, some parts of private business, a certain amount of severance paid for X years or months of service. And usually it's some kind of salary continuation, benefits continuation. Public sector doesn't do that. The, I believe what you're talking about is some liquidation of possibly accrued sick time or vacation time.
Exactly.
But there is no, there is, there isn't, you know, a one month to pay for every year of service or-
Right, right.
Or so forth. Secondly, with regard to the cuts, I, I have heard the explanation that these cuts are going to be effective for 2012 and that the board isn't desiring the cuts this year. But changes will need to be made this year to begin to eliminate some of those trailing costs going into 2012. And while you've put some, some additional funds available for those things to be looked at, we could have a significant bounce with trailing cost that, that may not be sufficiently shored up to pay. That's just one issue. I, I'm not worried about it right now because I too am a little optimistic that, that some of the numbers will come in a little bit higher than anticipated because of the conservative nature of the numbers. But these departments are going to need to make changes now. You can't wait until we give them the money, otherwise it's a double whammy. They're trying to try to take those out of next year and it's going to be hard because they'll be paying, the trailing cost sometimes can be upward of 40 or 50% of the reduction. They're requiring additional reductions just to get within the line.
Cover all the payouts, correct. I covered the unemployment and such like that, but not knowing what bodies they're going to be till we get total responses back from the officials where they're going to lose or cut services. I couldn't put a, it may not be all personnel cuts.
They, they may not be all personnel cuts, and that's one of the reasons why.
So I couldn't put that number. I have always in the past doing it, put a number, 20 points, no recovered for it because that covers the PRS and the healthcare, somewhere around 20%. But I couldn't at this point because I don't know if they're all, I mean, that's why I decided, what we've all talked about for the last 60, 75 days, put into a forum to present that the commissioners agreed to. And then I'm assuming we will get responses back from all the departments as to what will happen. And then we'll have an idea of what our trailing costs, or there might be some cuts in here that may not be personnel related because I didn't take them out of their personnel budgets. I took them out of their full budget.
And, and I think that's what I was alluding to, to Commissioner Kokoski, that I, I have to look at where in the budget these things can come from. Where now, we're starting to see some dividends from those trailing costs we had on those long-term leases when we closed office services. We've outsourced the printing, we reduced our printing costs and, and made some maneuvers there, but we still had up until mid this year to pay those leases on those very expensive machines. And those are gone now. So now we're starting to see that savings and we may be able to transfer that around and, and, you know, not realize as much loss in other areas. So, but anybody that thinks they're going to have trailing costs with regard to the changes they're going to propose needs to be in front of them now rather than next year. Because we will, simply won't have the money to help them with that and pay the trailing cost.
Correct.
I appreciate that because that, that's what we're doing. We're trying to be proactive so that we don't have those costs.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. The other thing I just wanted to share, the, the gray folder contains information from Keith Smith, our director at OSU Extension. He presented at the Northeast Region County Commissioners Meeting last week. And so I brought this information back for you. Our Extension Advisory Committee will be, be meeting on November 7th to go over some of those descriptions and really talk about what are the critical needs, you know, and staff changes.
We would appreciate any support we may get for Issue 22 from the Extension and their constituency.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to public comment now?
Uh, Board Correspondents?
Oh, will the reading be waived?
Second. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kaski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Okay, public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
After all the bad news, I guess I'll just add to some of the nice comments that were made earlier. I'm glad that the commissioners know so much about the Lorraine Vocational School. For over 20 years, I guess, the Peasces and the Johnsons have gone out there to have lunch dinner at their dining room, not their cafeteria. And I would urge anybody that has the opportunity to do that to make a reservation and go because you can get a wonderful dinner there at a very good price. We also, my husband and I, who were early on, many, many thousands of years ago, known as the Overland Walkers, found that the vocational school was open to the public for walking. And so it became a wonderful place for us to walk after school is out, 2:30, and the buses are gone, and go out there and walk. And other local people and county people did, all over the place. And that was a wonderful opportunity to see, I'm using wonderful too many times, the wonderful opportunities that were there. My son, who supervises and is a welder himself in Chicago, has gone out to walk with me when he's visited me. And he's been very impressed by their new welding program and so on. So, there isn't any question that, that it needs our support as this is the county and its tax issues this year.
Thank you, Shirley.
Morning Commissioners, David Aschenhurst, Oberlin. I have three things. One, just to follow up on the JVS thing, a minute, I appreciate all the good comments by the commissioners on that as well. And I would remind you again of the little circular that I gave you a couple of weeks ago that was apparently a piece of information about the JVS that also mentioned that they had an issue on the ballot. And it did not have any disclaimer or anything that said there was a political campaign committee that was responsible for that. If that circular was a legal circular, I submit that the commissioners can do the same thing and make some of its arguments about the state of the county's finances and the need for a quarter cent sales tax increase on a temporary basis for five years available in a, in a very straightforward way. We've seen the article in the Chronicle Telegram today that says, we're going to have an abbreviated campaign and we're not going to do much. I really think that information is worth more than billboards anyway, so I would encourage you to do what you can to reduce these detailed explanations of the situation and the need for the money to something as brief as the JVS did. Get permission to print it at your own expense if that's what's necessary.
I think, David, not to interrupt you, with the cuts we're looking at proposing at, if we were to use county dollars, even though it's, it's legal, and I'm not arguing the point-
Right.
We can print those things, I don't think the public would be very happy with us. I would rather do the abbreviated campaign with one concise message. We've just agreed to what we're going to send down as the budget cuts in our shortfall for next year.
Okay, well-
I think our next, you know, let me finish.
Sure.
I think our next point, because you're talking about the sales tax, it is, well then, these all go out. We are meeting Monday night at Penfield Township, starting, the Commissioner Williams set up. Okay, we'll do our editorial boards. This is where we're going to be next year, it's all agreed and departments have it. And now I think we can move forward. It's been a very long drawn-out process because as in the past, you've never seen the county hold those budget hearings and the meetings of all the elected officials and the thoroughness of this budget being torn apart.
I understand.
And having the past. And I think you can realize what the effort that's gone into doing all this to coming right where we're at today. I think now we can start moving forward on what we're going to do. But again, it's not, as the paper said today, we didn't start this campaign in January-
No.
And have the opportunity to raise $170,000, so.
No, I understand. And I'm just saying, you, the commissioners' meetings are on the county cable and some, a judicious set of PowerPoints can be running on there sometimes when it's a blue screen or when NASA doesn't have a satellite falling out of the sky or whatever else we're going to find on our Lorraine County Community College station over the next couple of weeks. So I'm just emphasizing that there are a lot of free ways and with your statements that the papers pick up, I think that's helpful too. But I do think education on this is, is a process well worth doing. Second, I just want to say unofficially on behalf of the City of Oberlin, the plans for green acres are at this point not, everybody just agrees that the county will, that the city will do something useful with it. There are plans right now to look at development of a couple of sections of it that are opposite residential housing and commercial activity on East Lorraine Street, but there is also certainly the, the treed area of it is going to be kept in trees as, as far as I understand it. But, so, the, the answer to Commissioner Williams' question is, it has not been decided what the city is going to do with it yet. It just was decided that that 15 acres would be of use to the city. And finally, I won't be at your next meeting because I will be at the third, well, they call it annual, but it's actually biannual Anti-Hate Task Force Conference at Lorraine County Community College. Goes from nine until four. The featured speakers on it are Michael Payton, the Executive Director of the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, and Stephen Dedelbach, the U.S. Attorney for the Northern District of, of Ohio, sorry. And I just, because hell's running the thing, the conference is part of an ongoing series of community dialogues and trainings offered by the Community Anti-Hate Task Force, a group of broad-based individuals who meet quarterly to discuss ways to promote a more tolerant Lorraine County and support the community policing efforts of local law enforcement. Sheriff's Committee and Prosecutor Dennis Will are the co-chairs of that. There will be a separate law enforcement track and some very interesting workshops. I hope even the commissioners might be able to attend after, you know, the, the lunch and afternoon session. I know you can't be there in the morning, but it would be great to see others out there. But that's what I'll be doing and I hope some others will take it up. There will be registration at the door as I understand it, if we're not filled up, but that will be very clear if we're totally booked for all our rooms and, and the community college can't make any more food and all that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? I'll make the motion to go into executive session as outlined by our county administrator and county prosecutor.
Second. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kaski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Eliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Utterd, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she's, gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before, we had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I, I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a, a bad day at work or anytime you come home, it's just always nice, they kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they, they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people, she likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad or she, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even, even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's going to play now.
Yeah, it's like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever and she'll hop down and she always like tries to bite her own tail. And then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and, and get her away from me because I was just so upset, but I, we, we both lived and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again just giving this dog, who, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play. And it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person that, you know, you're giving a, a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out-
me get out of the house every day, and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you, and sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorain County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, hey, Mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorain County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website, and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorain County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Give the Lorain County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children are educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorain County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorain County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights, the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, oh, and we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run. And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signal stops doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous, and the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take